Good afternoon, everyone. We've finally got the right button after all this time. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for attending the committee today. The committee is of the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee. The meeting today is open to the public and the meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting, although I don't see anyone from Sheffield Live here today. We've not received any public questions or petitions from members of the public by the submission deadline. Could I please request that mobile phones and such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There are no fire tests planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff and the assembly point is at Tudor Square. Could I ask each policy committee member in turn to introduce themselves and I'll start this way? Thank you.
Hi, I'm councillor Malachi Hayby for Brumhill and Sharrow Vale.
Marouf Ralph, Netheridge and Sharrow, Deputy Chair of this committee.
Councillor Anne Whitaker, councillor for West Ecclesfield Ward.
So we'll get somebody over to sort your microphone out for you.
Good afternoon, councillor Julie Grokut, Stockspisian of the Don Ward, substitute member for councillor Hurst.
Hi, Nigat Bhishara, councillor for Netheridge and Sharrow Ward.
Councillor Jane Dunn. Thank you. The agenda and reports for today's meeting are available on the council's website and paper copies are available in the chamber. Please note that there are two appendices for item 12 which are not available to the public and press because they contain exempt information described in paragraph three of Schedule 12A to the Local Government Act 1972 as amended. If members wish to discuss the information, we will need to ask the members of the public and the press to kindly leave for that part of the meeting and we will halt the webcast. Do I have any apologies for absence, please?
Yes, Diane Hurst sent her apologies and Julie Grokut is here as her substitute.
Thank you, Fiona. Exclusions are public and press, as we've just alluded to. There will be... Item number 12 has some exempt...
Sorry.
It's all going on. Some exempt information in there and at that point, if we do have members that wish to discuss items on there, we will halt the webcast. Thank you. Do we have any declarations of interest that members would like to declare? I'll take silence as a no. If we can go to page 11 on your pack, please, and look at our... Oh, sorry, I've gone past item five. Public questions and petitions, of which we have none today. Item number four is... Page 11, Agenda Reports Pack, is the minutes from the previous meeting. I'm assuming everyone's had time to read through your agenda pack and I'll go through each page. On page 11, any matters arising? Page 12, page 13, page 14, page 15 and page 16. Can we declare those a true record of our previous meeting? Thank you. Item number six is Members' Questions. We've not received any members' questions on this occasion by the deadline. And item number seven is the Work Programme and I'll just hand over to Fiona for the Work Programme, which is on page 17. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. So this is our standing item that we have to look at, the Work Programme. As you can see, we've got a number of new items listy added. I'd also like to take this opportunity to encourage all members of the committee to start thinking of any items that might be coming up past March. Obviously, we're not aware of the membership or the dates for 24 to 25, but the sooner the better, really, that we start listing these in a separate table just for upcoming items past our final committee scheduled meeting, which will be on the 19th of March 2024.
Any questions on the current work programme? Councillor.
Can I just... I don't know whether it's on there, I couldn't see it. In terms of school admissions coming to the February meeting, on the admissions committee, we're repeatedly getting parents appealing about schools and we're becoming aware that we don't think the information that they're provided with is perhaps the correct... not correct, but, you know, the right information in an easy format. And I think what's been asked for is a task and finish group of members and officers to review the current information pack that parents receive, with particular reference also included to travel. Because we're getting parents come to us who either don't choose a catchment area school and they just choose three schools that they think they'd like and then they end up with a school that's really far away from them. We had one recently whereby one of the catchment schools was actually 4.9 miles away. So they didn't choose it because they chose nearer schools and that meant they didn't get a bus pass because it was parental choice. So there's all kinds of anomalies there that perhaps need, when we're looking at admissions, that need looking at.
Thank you, councillor Whitaker. I'm happy to set up a task and finish. Have we got members on the committee that would be interested in that? Yeah, can you note names, please, Fiona? And Nigat Bashar. Thank you. Is it on the Work Programme? On the Work Programme? Have you got a comment on the Work Programme? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you.
Just...
Thank you.
Sorry, I might have missed it completely, like I am, because I'm trying to squint and look at this. The issue around the students we had who came in regarding race equality issues, et cetera, et cetera. Presumably, that's on the Work Programme somewhere for the next year? Is it on somewhere, is it? I've just missed it.
Yeah, update on the race equality work that we were doing and I'm sure that Meredith will be able to give us an update under...
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on now to... Is everyone happy with the Work Programme? As it is, we will set up a task and finish for that and we'll ensure that we highlight the race equality stuff on there as well. So item number eight is An Approach to School Improvement, which is on page 39 of your pack and the presenting officer today is Pat Buttrall. And this item... But it's not... Oh, you don't look like Pat Andrew. Bob? Or Stephen? So it's not Pat. Yeah, we've got... If you'd like to introduce yourselves and then go into the item, thank you.
I'm Andrew Jones, I'm Director of Education and Skills.
Hi, I'm Bob Cuff, I'm School Advisor to Andrew Jones and Meredith.
And Stephen Betts from Learn Sheffield.
So by way of explanation, the presenting officer was due to be our Assistant Director, Pat Buttrall, but Pat is poorly today, unfortunately, is not able to come in person to the meeting, so I'll pick up Pat's duties. So... But we thought it would be really useful as well for the committee to also be able to meet with Stephen Betts, who leads Learn Sheffield, partly for us to... for him to contribute as part of what we're going to talk to you, but also just to take any questions from members as well. The item flows from a previous decision in the committee in July, where we're looking at arrangements for how the council's statutory duties in relation to school improvement were discharged. We had an existing contract with our partner organisation, Learn Sheffield, and that contract was ending in the summer, so we had a decision not to outsource some aspects of that contract and to continue with some aspects of that contract. And as part of that discussion, in the summer, we agreed that we would come back to the committee at this meeting and talk to the committee more about, more broadly, about how school improvement is undertaken in the city. So the paper sets out that we've got a number, quite a wide range of statutory duties, well over 100 education-related statutory duties, and the paper, section 1.2, just summarizes those into sort of broad headings. But as you'll see, most of the statutory duties don't actually relate directly to what you might call school improvement. All right, sorry, they don't relate directly to school improvement. So... And there's been a view nationally from the DFE for a long time, really since the 1990s, that actually school improvement is best done by people working in the sector. In other words, head teachers supporting other head teachers or English teachers supporting other English teachers and networking and supporting each other like that. The academies programme was in place prior to the 2010 election, but expanded after 2010 and that means schools actually go outside of local authority, controlled and no longer maintained by the local authority. At that point, we, in Sheffield, we looked at how we approached school improvement and how we approached relationships with each other and we set up a loose organisation called the Citywide Learning Body. And about eight years ago, that was then formalised into setting up Learn Sheffield. Learn Sheffield is an organisation that was jointly set up by the council along with schools. All schools are shareholders in Learn Sheffield and the council also has a 20% controlling interest in that as well. Schools and the council have seats on the Board of Directors for Learn Sheffield and I'm going to ask Stephen shortly just to highlight some of the impact of that work over that period of time, but it's been a very successful arrangement and in terms of Ofsted grades, we've never had such higher grades in Sheffield as we do currently. The paper highlights that academy decisions are the sole responsibility of individual governing bodies. We don't have any powers or any remit to control that. And whereas about 60% of schools are currently academies and 40% are maintained, over 75% of children attending schools in Sheffield attend academies. And that's not an insignificant statistic because it means schools are funded per pupil. So as well as 75% of children being in academies, it means that 75% of education funding sits with academies. Funding equates to staff, so it means roughly that 75% of education staff who work in Sheffield work in academies as well. So our arrangement and our wish to have an ongoing relationship with Learn Sheffield is based upon the fact that actually the council, in terms of its maintain school responsibilities, it's actually quite small. And one of the ways in which we can influence the sector and work collectively is through Learn Sheffield and by a more collaborative approach. So in the paper, section 1.9, the paper describes the kind of school improvement activity that Learn Sheffield undertakes. And at page... On the next section, just further down on 1.9, it also explains how the funding received by the council has reduced over a period of time. So since its inception, the large amount of funding at the start was from the council and now it's actually much reduced. I'm just going to pause there and see if Stephen wants to just come in and just talk about particularly that funding paradigm, but also just some of the activities that Learn Sheffield undertake.
Thank you. I suppose the slide at the top of page nine, which was taken from the training session for the committee, just reflects how the relationship financially between the council and Learn Sheffield has changed over those eight years. So in the first year of Learn Sheffield, as you can see there, we had a commission that was worth 860,000 and that was 96% of our budget. It was at the beginning, the whole budget, really. That's obviously decreased over time and this year, in our budget, we have 185,000 coming from the council, of which 60,000 is the School Improvement Commission. And that equates to 6.6% of our budget, so it's obviously a much smaller part of our revenue. I think there's a couple probably of associated points to that, though. I think in terms of the value of having a vehicle like Learn Sheffield, I suppose there's a couple of points to make. One would be it's relatively unusual in this very fragmented landscape we have in education in this country at this point, for a local area to carry on having that kind of relationship with its academies. So if you look at our income from school improvement, the vast majority of that now comes from the schools themselves, as in they buy a subscription for us, from us. And that is just as likely to be an academy as it is a maintained school. It's just as likely to be a national academy as it is a local academy. So the first thing is the connectivity that we have, which is, you know, not always everything we would want it to be, but it's certainly better than most places have. I think the second point you can take from the financial point really is probably the value of a vehicle. So if you look at the 2023/24 budget, you've basically got 2.8 million pounds being spent on education activity in Sheffield this year. And of that, less than 200,000 of it is coming from the council, just over 1.2... or just under 1.2 million of it is coming from schools. The rest of it is coming from other projects, other activities, other things that we're involved in. So it's that ability as a city to collaborate, the voluntary sector, the education sector, the council and so on, to be able to collaborate, to bring activity into the city that otherwise either wouldn't be here or would be here but would be more difficult, essentially. I mean, Andrew alluded to the impact and I guess that's more perhaps for our meeting in March, but Sheffield is now above national in terms of the proportion of schools that are good or better. And whilst Ofsted isn't everything, you know, by any stretch of the imagination, that is a really significant factor. So back in 2015, Sheffield was 10 percentage points below national in terms of the proportion of schools that were good or better. In 21/22, we go above. Last year, we improved that a little bit, so we've been above national now for two years. That equates to something like 21,000 kids in Sheffield going to a school that's good or better compared to where we were in 2015. So these, you know, it's not the whole thing, it's not everything, but it is significant. And I guess that's what Andrew was kind of referring to.
Okay. For the benefit of the committee, so there are various definitions of good and outstanding or requires improvement inadequate, but in a good school, all children make appropriate progress. In an outstanding school, then actually more than a larger proportion of those children make better than expected progress. So actually, whereas it is only Ofsted, Ofsted having also good grades is really important because it actually has a direct correlation to the impact on children's outcomes. And what we want to do is to make sure that actually the... that those Ofsted grades translate into those outcomes and in particular, we continue to push for even greater improvement and wherever possible, a larger proportion of schools who are outstanding as well. So that is our approach. We set up Learn Sheffield with schools about eight years ago. We asked the committee to endorse that approach and we believe that's the best way of actually securing that actually we may... we keep in touch with our academies as well as with our maintained schools, which enables us to have strategic priorities for the city in relation to education, to have a vehicle and a means of actually working with them. We're currently talking to schools about the concept of a civic partnership because not all schools are maintained, not all schools are academies, not all schools subscribe to Learn Sheffield. So it's a means by which perhaps another vehicle, ways in which we could actually work with them and we are in particular talking about how we could perhaps use attendance as a starting point in terms of a focus for that civic partnership. So in presenting this paper too, as we're asking the committee to note our approach to school improvement, it is in line with the national approach, it is demonstrating impact in terms of Ofsted outcomes and we would ask for the continued support of the committee.
Thank you very much. Do any members have any questions or comments on this paper? Councillor Marouf.
Thank you, Jay. Just a few comments and one or two questions. In terms of... We have a 20% share in this, in Sheffield. Is that relation... What... The point I'm trying to make here, is it truly an independent organisation with 20% share being held by Sheffield City Council? That's question number one. And if so, is there an audit process that follows through, making sure that there is an impartiality in terms of that? Because if you were devil's advocate, and I'm just being devil's advocate here, is somebody could read into it and say, look, it's part of Sheffield City Council's, they've got 20% share in it, they funded it, they set it up and now it's becoming semi-independent. There might be undue influence. I'm just sharing what some people may have concerns around. Second point is around the subscription side of things. And this is going to be a surprise to everybody really here, but this 2.8 million doesn't sound a huge amount of money to spend on sort of issues that we're trying to collaborate around. And the third and final point is independent schools, not the independence purely private schools, but independent schools like some faith schools, et cetera, that have been set up. Sometimes the needs there are quite strong in terms of having work or collaboration activities. Do we have any outreach towards those schools? Because they tend to be the ones, not generally, but some of them can be quite weak in that sense. Thank you, Jay.
I'll just pick up some of the questions last, Stephen, to just contribute as well. So it feels independent to me, councillor Marouf, I have to say. But it's set up, I think it's from in the 1980s, I'm looking to Sarah, I think it's the Local Government Housing Act, which actually prescribes when councils have... when local authorities have arms-length companies attached to them, the proportion which they are enabled to have a share. And I think it's actually 19.9% rather than 20%. I might be misquoting the law, but I think that's where it comes from. So that's where our interest in that comes from. It's necessary because we are the supervising body for the company. But nevertheless, it then operates as any other company does and under the rules of Companies House and the way other companies do. Any directors on that have to act in the interest of the company, rather than necessarily any individual parties who are participants in it. And I think it's fair to say that through the annual reports that Learn Sheffield issues, they do that without fear or favour, sometimes critical of organisations, including the council, as they were last year. But that was moreover in terms of our position at that point and a difficulty in terms of moving from one funding system to another. But I give it as evidence of the fact that I think Learn Sheffield is one and truly independent of the council. Stephen?
Yeah, certainly are independent. And I suppose adding to what Andrew said, you know, sometimes we disagree and we fall out is the evidence of that. I think also the level of buy-in that we have from schools wouldn't be the case if we were an arms-length organisation, if that makes sense. We're a not-for-profit company. We have a close working relationship with the council and that's on behalf of our schools and that's right and proper and part of our role in civic education, but we certainly are independent. I agree with you that 2.8 million isn't a huge amount of money and I'm very happy to have that conversation at some point. And of that, about half of it, as you'll see, comes from kind of subscription in terms of schools. I think in fairness to the city council, what I would say is that is government policy. You know, the government that we've had for quite a long period of time now regards school improvement as a traded activity. That's been consistently their direction. They don't put money into this kind of activity and over time, that's diminished and we're now at the point where it's an entire... That's not a local decision, that's a national decision that we all kind of work with. In terms of independent schools, we do work occasionally with both faith schools and what you might call the private sector, but it's on an ad hoc basis. So no independent school has up to this point chosen to subscribe to Learn Sheffield. It may be that they do on occasion. They tend to participate in statutory processes, so things like moderation of writing, that kind of stuff. But it tends to be when somebody's in a pickle and they want a particular type of support that we tend to be approached. We don't have a kind of formal subscription relationship. And it's interesting in Sheffield that the proportion of independent schools is smaller than it is in some of the other core cities and that also, I think, plays into our data a little bit sometimes as well, just while we're talking about independent schools.
Any more questions from anyone? Any comments? No? So the recommendation of this report is that we note the contents of the report and agree to receive further updates to any changes in school improvement approaches either on a school, local or national level. Are we all agreed? Thank you, we're all agreed. Thank you for coming along. See you again later on next year. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is item number nine on page 53 of your report pack and it is the Developing the Belonging Framework. And back over to Andrew and Joe and Bob. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jo Horrigan, Director of Integrated Commissioning.
So Jo and I are jointly going to present the paper to the committee and we're joined by Bob just in terms of any discussion points that arise from this. So we're presenting the committee today with a paper, we're not asking for a decision today. We are updating the committee and then bringing this paper to the committee today, hoping to just actually set in public that the council is starting to work and develop a belonging framework for the city. We've deliberately chosen to style it as a framework rather than a policy or a strategy because we actually want to create some conversations, we want to open up a dialogue about the concept of belonging and we want to actually change practice through actually doing and talking about this rather than having a set list of things that we wish them people to... that we wish to follow. The concept of belonging is starting to emerge and being used and talked about in other local authorities in different parts of the country. For want of a better word, it's an extension of the concept of inclusion. But as I sometimes describe it, the difference between inclusion and belonging is that inclusion would give somebody a seat at the table, whereas actually belonging would actually give them a seat at the table and a voice to use at the table as well. An inherent part, a really important part of belonging is the voice of children and young people as part of that. And what we're proposing to do from January is to continue with discussions with children and young people as we start to work out what they need in order to help them feel belonging, to help them feel that they belong. It is fundamentally, it's an idea and it's a concept, it is, but if you all think about what it means to belong, it's just a really basic understanding in terms of that word, that actually we generally all do better where we feel like we belong, where we feel like we belong in our family or in our school or in our communities or in the organisation that we work for. All of us tend to do better, to perform better, to feel more relaxed and to actually to have better outcomes as part of that. So our belonging framework is about what we need to do as a council, but also in other organisations as well, to help children and young people to feel like they belong in their school, but also, as I say, in their families and in their communities as well as part of that. It is a concept that's academically based. We've been talking to the University in London, in particular Professor Catherine Riley, who's a leading academic in this field, so it's got an academic basis to it as well. But in particular, what we're aiming to do is to enable the voice of children and young people to be heard, to be heard by us in the council and the services that we provide so that helps us to shape our services and our policies, to have a healthy debate and a discussion with colleagues and teams with others in the city about the concept of belonging, how we can successfully implement this, what that means for other people as well as part of that. To start to get some cross-connection and some connectivity between teams in the council but also outside other organisations as well as we go about promoting belonging and a feeling of belonging for children and young people. And to start to develop some common language for those discussions to take place so that we're all really clear what we're talking about. And within the council itself, as I said, we're not going to develop a single belonging framework for others to adopt, but you could imagine in the council, it's a big organisation that perhaps decisions taken in housing might have an impact on where a child is located and their sense of belonging. Sometimes perhaps we might make a decision in education about where they're going to be educated, housing might make a different or contrary discussion on that. Belonging is an important concept to our community colleagues as well, it's an important concept to children's social care as well as to education as well. So that is what we're aiming to do. I'm just going to ask Joe just to address the implications in terms of how we commission activity, services... activities, services and other things as well. Jo?
Thanks, Andrew. I think that the commissioning intentions and how this plugs in and is part of and informed by the framework is a really helpful illustration of how we want the framework to really drive our focus on belonging and what matters to children and young people. So, you know, we have high-level commissioning intentions which are set out in the draft framework in the appendix. We have sort of a very clear idea of what we want to, what we want in terms of outcomes for pre-birth to five years, for five to eleven, for secondary school age and post-sixteen and beyond. But actually, what we want to use the belonging framework for, the process of developing the belonging framework, is to really make sure that those commissioning intentions centre on and focus on the views and ideas and ambitions of our children and young people in the city. So my hope for this is that children and young people will help to develop the framework, they'll be core to developing the framework, but from there, they will also be able to hold us, people like myself as a commissioner of services, to account using that framework. So in my service, I will expect that children and young people will hold us to account for that, for ensuring that those high-level commissioning intentions that I won't run through, but I've set it up in the appendix, really actually do more than just deliver the straightforward outcomes, but actually really underpin their sense and their experience of belonging in all its forms. And for me, there is something here about how we work with our commissioned and procured providers, how we work with schools, how we work with care providers, for example, and early intervention services, how public health interventions support this as well, about how we ensure that this belonging framework will help drive that focus on ensuring that the way we go about securing services and the services themselves and the way we continually improve them and drive change in services is underpinned by that drive for belonging. For children and young people, their families, but also for those employed in supporting them, because we know that that has significant correlation with the outcomes for children and young people and the workforce. And so that is a key part of our commissioning intentions.
So just to conclude, section one point one two, there's some principles for belonging there, particularly about the importance and the need to consider children, young people's belonging in all the decisions that we take. So in other words, we're not somehow trying to insert this, actually when we're taking our decisions, we always have regard to how that enables children to belong. Listening to children's views is very key as a principle, taking a strengths-based approach, in other words, building on the positives, not looking for things that are wrong, not actually labelling children. And in particular, thinking about a more relational approach in terms of our services, building on commonalities and celebrating difference as a principle, and trying to think about the different needs of different groups as well and building that into the work that we do in other decisions and finally developing a language as part of that. So we're asking the committee to note our paper, councillor Dale, and we're asking in particular for an endorsement in terms of a co-produced approach to belonging. Our intention is then to come back to the committee in March with a further update.
Thank you, everyone. I will bring anyone in who's got any comments or questions, write it down and say. I would just like to say, this is a fantastic piece of work that, you know, when I came into council was particularly in order to be able to advocate for young people of Sheffield. And I think it's tough enough to crack in the sense that nationally, we don't treat young people very well and we force our young people onto the periphery of society, which then you see signs of young people disengaging and not feeling like part of their communities. And I'm hoping that in Sheffield, we can break that cycle and we can have that cultural shift. And I think, and it is again about the way we also speak about young people and the way that we take a more positive approach to celebrating the accomplishments of children and young people in Sheffield, rather than focusing on that deficit all of the time. And I think what I would also like to see as part of this belonging framework is how we work with the media in Sheffield, because I think quite often, we don't very often see very many good news stories about the accomplishments of children and young people and celebrate that. But what we do tend to see is very negative language around young people and gangs and all that sort of stuff, which I think we could also be part of this belonging framework. So yes, we need to work with schools and health and care, but I think we also need to work with the media to look at how in Sheffield are we going to make our young people feel like part of our society really and try to create that cultural shift. So we really are a city for young people and celebrate that. So thank you. I've got councillor Grokka and then councillor Whitaker and councillor Hebe.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just concur with everything you've said. I think it's a really good and important piece of work, so thank you for doing it. For me, one of the really important things about this is not just that the council do it, but that its other partners do it as well. One of the big concerns I get often from particularly parents in senior schools in my ward about the academies is that they almost knock the individuality out of the young people, that they have got to conform to so many things that they actually lose their own individual identity. And hopefully this will do something about bringing that light, because I think it's quite, I think it's quite important that we do look at this and whether that's real or perceived, if parents are feeling that and children are feeling that, then it's something that we do need to look at to understand and see how we address. So for me, it's about working with partners. I think another one is the police. I think it's really important that children have a proper understanding of the role of the police, that the police work with us in this area as well. And the NHS, I think you are taking on an absolutely massive, massive piece of work, but I think it's really important that we do it. And I think also to start looking at what the longer-term benefits of that will be, because if young people are feeling that they belong, then hopefully, you know, their life choices, their skills, their abilities will be so much better that ultimately their need for services will diminish as well, because they will be strong, they will be independent and they will, you know, make really good life choices. So good luck. I think it's something that we can all get behind and look forward to seeing how it develops. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Grokka. I think Meredith just wanted to come in on that.
Yeah, so thank you councillor Grokka. I think that's really helpful and absolutely we're working with partners across the piece around this and this will be helpful in almost having that plan for children's services. I think that belonging is already a clear language that I'm hearing in all of our schools. They talk about the importance of children belonging and feel that they belong. And we had a fantastic trauma-informed conference, which was primary schools and secondary schools at the back end of last half term. And again, there's a really powerful conversation about that importance of our children and young people belonging in their schools. There is, and we accept that there is a cohort, a group of children and young people that do not feel that they belong. We've got too many children in Sheffield Inclusion Centre who've been permanently excluded. We've got too many children who are not attending a full-time education, ninety percent attendance or more across the city. That's a collective responsibility that we have and that belonging framework sets that. Some of that is decisions that schools can make, but it's also about decisions that we're making as a system. So I'm also of the view that if we are providing better therapy services for our children within schools, there is more likelihood of them remaining in school. So I think it's that, it's the complexity of the situation and how we all play a part within that to ensure that you as constituent elected members are not getting parents who are saying, my child doesn't feel that they belong in secondary school and that children do have the ability to be themselves within in schools. And each school has a very different context. And actually, some of the schools which we might see as having a particular style, we also know that a lot of parents want their children to go there, particularly if their children are neurodiverse because of that structure. So this is a complex system that we're working in, which we all know. And the belonging framework gives us that language to be able to ensure that our children and young people have the right voice, but also that we are able collectively to challenge to ensure that our children and young people belong.
Thanks, Meredith. Just on the back of that, I think what councillor Grokka, I mean, I have similar cases that come through with regards to children feeling like they belong in secondary school and I think it is really important to have the voice of the child, because while some schools may be using the language about belonging, belonging is about children belonging in that space as their true self and not because they belong, because they conform with that system within that setting. So I think the proof will be in the pudding, whether or not the school have the narrative about belonging because those children conform or those children belong in their true sense of identity, rather than fitting into the square peg in the roundhole situation. So that'll be interesting piece of work. So I've got next, I've got councillor Whitaker.
I think part of what I was going to say has already been said and I think we're probably all going to agree that it's a really important piece of work and I think it's a really interesting piece of work as well. And I think it's important for us to get it right if we can. And obviously, we've talked before on this committee about how important early years is for everything. And if we get it right at early years, then that has huge benefits for young people later on in life. And so I think it is really important. I think we all like to have that sense of belonging, whether it's belonging to a family, belonging to a school, secondary school, belonging to a workplace. We like to think of those as our other families. And I can think back when I was at secondary school, well, when I was at primary school, of having that lovely feeling at school that, you know, I belong to this school, that this is, you know, where you feel really at home and things. And I think that's important for children to feel that, because then there's a knock-on effect, you know, we've talked about, you know, school attendance and obviously there's a great knock-on effect for school attendance, isn't there? And I think, you know, nobody's going to argue a sense of belonging is slightly important. So I'm really glad to see this piece of work coming to the committee and keen to see how it progresses. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Whitaker. Councillor Hebe?
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to say thank you for bringing this framework and echo what everybody else said about how important it is. On here it mentioned how belonging can allow contribution for young people, which allows them to academically achieve a lot better. But I think it's the other way around. I think for them, they have to contribute to them belong. So my question's more, it's going to be a complex piece of work and I think for a lot of young people, when you ask them about, do you feel like you belong? It could be a quite traumatic experience, because now you're asking them to look back and think, do I belong in these spaces? Some people have never probably asked themselves that question. So the question, my question is, where will you go to speak to these young people? Because you can go into a school and ask them and their answer may be different, but you can go into a community organisation where they go regularly, where these people are not in an authoritative position, more like an uncle or an older position, where they're a lot more open. So my question is, how will you navigate this? Because you will have different answers depending on the environment. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a really, it's a really good question and it is something that we've been working on and given probably some of the most thought to really, because you're absolutely right. Even asking a question can be really quite challenging and thinking about how we ask that question, the context of that, the being ready for what we might hear and being able to respond appropriately are all things that we've been very mindful of. We've been working really closely with colleagues in the Community Engagement and Community Youth Services and also with colleagues, including Bob, around engagement with children and young people in schools. We've also been working with our colleagues in children and families and their engagement work. And actually, what I'm hoping is that as a result of working up this framework, we will start to pull together all of those ways in which we interact with children and young people and start to think about how we have in common that understanding of belonging and how that may be slightly different in lots of different contexts and it will be different for, you know, for any of us. Belonging will mean something different in different places and different times and depending on how we're feeling at any one time. But it will start, it'll help us start to bring that together and to be really mindful of how we ask. So children and young people who are trained up in engagement, in co-production are working with us on the way in which we even start to ask the question. Does that, does that make sense? So our kind of, we've got a number of young people, quite considerable number of young people who are, who have worked with us really closely in the way we design services in things like the youth forum, the youth council. And they are very articulate and very clear about what matters to them and the language that they prefer to be used and the language they don't want to hear used. So we're working really closely with them, with colleagues like Bob, who I think will come in in a second, to make sure that the way in which we go about this dialogue is, you know, is as sensitive and meaningful and purposeful as possible and that, you know, this isn't just a survey or just an engagement exercise, it's an ongoing dialogue that we learn, we all learn from.
Thank you, Jo. I think Bob wants to come in, but we have a fantastic team who you will have met, our voice and influence workers, so it might be a good idea to get them involved in this as well. But Bob?
Yeah, it's just to say, it was yesterday, I met with some young people in a community music organisation and spoke to them. Now, I can't offer you much more than that because it was brand new yesterday, sort of the first focal point for me, but we have made contact with schools and other educational settings to go and visit them in the new year. They've been very receptive and we've been very transparent with them, we want to discuss this. And it sort of reminds me a little bit of the Enlightenment, which started in cafes and it's just getting out everybody's lips and everybody talking about it and creating a movement. And I might not have any key points of inquiry, but neither do kids, so it's quite refreshing that way. But if we're just generating that movement of belonging with our colleagues and different sectors and some of the, it was very interesting to listen to some of the children's perspective yesterday, but it was the first time, so I'll be able to fill you in as we go along.
Thank you, Meredith.
So this is going to be an iterative process, so part of the conversation is going to be the conversation and what we want to bring back in March, April is not the finished product, but what I would like us to be perhaps positioning is that we also push that we become a children's rights organisation and that means that every decision that we make as a council, we have the voice of the child and the young person as part of that. And we want to hear the views of young people in a variety of different settings, in a variety of different ways. And it is going to be a challenge, because not everybody belongs at every moment. We all know that there are times when we don't feel we belong with something and that is part of our life experience. How do we reduce that amount of time and how do we give people that security that we are supporting, that they're still loved? So if they are in a school where they feel that they can't be themselves, how do they have the ability to question that? And how do they find spaces outside of school where they do belong and they are flourishing? And that's just some of that conversation, we want to get into that space as well as them being able to say, look, this doesn't fit for me, what are you going to do that makes sure that I fit? And we're empowering people. So I do like Bob's view that it's a movement.
So do I. Councillor Basra?
First of all, I'm just going to say thank you for this. I think the last few meetings you've shared quite in-depth about this belonging and, you know, fully supported, even also like Julie mentioned, the impact, you know, this is the early stages where the experience in the school and what the child or the families have been going through, even in this day and age, is even more, a lot of concerns issues and the impact it could have on that young person. And I think this is a fantastic piece of work, which I fully endorse. And I think the sooner we can get this rolling is better, because I think, I'm not going to question any one of you, because through Dawn, I've attended the meetings and I've seen in depth, you know, the fantastic work and hard work that you've been doing, which answered a lot of my questions and concerns. But I think also just it's co-production and I think, Andrew, you just mentioned something that really touched me, because obviously in my ward and the parents and the concerns, you know, they're raised, I think it tackles that, like not just this being an extension of the inclusion, but it's a seat on the table with a voice for the young person. And then, Meredith, obviously, since you've started, I just be fond of everything you've said and how you're working. And then Meredith, obviously, since you've started, I just be fond of everything you've said and how you're working. And I think if this carries on, I think we can address some of the issues that families and young people are facing currently. Obviously, I'm not going to share everything here, but I've shared some individual cases. But I think I would definitely, you know, take this back and all the hard work that is taking place in terms of tackling some of those issues and concerns, because if a child doesn't feel belonged in a school, we know, like everybody's mentioned, the impact it can have on their life for the years to come ahead. So I think if we get it right at this stage, we can really, really make a difference. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Marouf.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I think it's a fantastic piece of work, and I think it's long overdue. A word of caution as well follows with it, because quite a number of times that we do initiatives such as this, the community don't engage as well as we would like them to engage, because it's being council-led, and people shy away from that. Is this another piece of work that's not going to go anywhere? So I think engagement with stakeholders is going to be terribly important throughout this whole process. The other comment I'd like to make also is that it's from the young people who are going to be part of this. It's their voice. It's been quite powerful when we did this end issue where the children actually came in. And you were with me on that, Andrew. And that was the most powerful thing that I ever heard. We receive the service. You should be asking those, not our parents, because they are... And that was quite powerful for me, to be honest, and not the teachers. So that was something that we really need to be mindful of. I was at an event in Burngree over the weekend, and there was young people there, and we're trying to say, how do you want to engage with mainstream areas? And they just felt that the youth services were missing what was there before, like youth service provision, et cetera, et cetera. It's been diluted quite a lot over the number of years. And that has actually created a new area for them to feel belonged. So they'll find an avenue to belong to something, like we belong to political parties, and we feel really quite comfortable when we're around each other that feel the same. There's a similar sort of feel for those young people as well. So I think that's something to address. And the other word of caution again is, and I've been around the block a few years now, is please don't go back to the same old people to consult with. Because there are lots of people out there that we consult on a regular basis, and it's so easy to do, because it takes a box. We need to go to the quietest voice out there, and that's where we will learn the most from. There are very many vociferous voices in this city, and they will be more than happy to contribute again. But for not getting criticised for this, I would like to say that we need to go to the quietest voice. And I think that's where the most powerful voice will come back. And I'm sure from what I'm hearing of you guys and knowing you, that's something that you would take on board. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Marouf. I'll just bring officers in, but I think with what Bob had said, I feel that this is more of a movement, more than a big bang and fanfare to start with. So I think this framework will start off pretty quietly and create a bit of an avalanche movement, rather than it being something that we deliver. It will be a process and a changing, a cultural shift. So Andrew, do you want to just come back in?
So just to echo councillor Marouf's recollection of an engagement, it was the interim committee, prior to this committee actually being formed last year, and it took evidence from a number of young people, one of whom was sitting with an adult, and the adult was reading out the child's views. And then the child then spoke and said, one of the things that really annoys me is adults speak for us with the adult sitting next to them. And it was a moment of hilarity, but quite profound evidence from that young person as well. So emphatically, this is why we've called it a framework, not a policy, not a strategy. In other words, it's not got an end to it. It is the start of a process, and it's designed to have legs as part of that. And totally accept as well the need to make our contributors to this as broad-based as possible, so that we're getting a real rich view around that. And councillor Hayby, you know, Bob's already answered in terms of how we're trying to do, get children's voice. But just last week, we had some really robust feedback from young people about some of the questions we were thinking of asking and actually realised that actually the questions that we got in our heads that made perfect sense to us made no sense to them. We even need to talk about the word belonging. Jo's had some conversations with her own children about it, what it actually means. And even the word belonging means different things to different people. So we just need to be really clear in these initial conversations what we're talking about. We clearly want to gain some traction, but Meredith and I, when we've been talking about this, we know this is a medium-to-long-term process. So actually, there will be some things that we're doing this year, but more next year, the third year, the fourth and the fifth year. And this will continue to develop.
Thank you. Councillor Horner.
Yes, I think this is a really important piece of work. And I just wanted to relate, because I think it does relate to this, a little story. I've come down the tram today, and behind me, I heard granny say to a, I think, three- to four-year-old, look out the tram window this side, it's a much better view. And so for the entire journey, I heard a four-year-old's view of what was happening out the tram window. And it's absolutely fascinating. And I'm looking at the same thing. This child was articulating what it was seeing, and it was fascinating and absolutely lovely journey. A really nice Christmas story, really. But that's why we need to listen to children, and sometimes when we least expect it.
Thank you, councillor Horner. That was really lovely, that. I think you're right, it is really important. And they can open our eyes to things that we're just not seeing. Councillor Marouf?
Thanks, Chair. Just want to say thank you for bringing this fantastic piece of work to us. I am fully supportive of it, focusing on developing and deepening children and people's sense of belonging. So I do trust that this will drive substantial change. I mean, substantial change.
Thank you, councillor Marouf. I have one final question from members, unless anyone else would like to ask anything. But as part of the belonging framework, I was wondering whether or not this is a time where we could look at doing a children's impact assessment and introducing that to the council. I know other local authorities do that as part of their equality impact assessment, but looking at specifically around the impact of policy decisions on children. And I just wondered if that could be part of this piece of work.
So I'll answer that. So yes, and that's part of the children's rights, is that what we will draft. So I think the voice of the child is, the voice of the child and the young person is going to take a long period of time, and more than that, three months. We will get some sense of that. We really want to have I statements at some point. But I think for what we want to have worked up by March is, what's it mean to be a children's rights organisation? That includes having a children's impact assessment or something within the equality impact assessment that looks at the children's viewpoint. And obviously, we need to galvanise our democratic services and other colleagues. But I think we're on good ground, so fertile ground. So yes, that's what we... That's the quick end game, which is what Andrew was referencing.
That's fantastic news. I think that's really important, and will demonstrate our ambition for children in Sheffield. So thank you for coming along. I think we've had a really good conversation on that. Really looking forward to seeing it develop and it coming back and watching over the next few years how we shift that culture in Sheffield. So the recommendations today are that we agree that Sheffield City Council develops a belonging framework in cooperation with children and young people, families and stakeholders. That we note the intention of the belonging framework is to provide an overarching vision to drive change, so that everything we do is focused on developing or deepening children and young people's sense of belonging. We note that the engagement plan for children and young people to inform the development of the framework. Note that the development of the framework will be an iterative process, as we gain the views of children and young people in ways that work best for them, and review and refine the framework and next steps based on this. And we note the intention for a continued conversation with this committee about belonging, including a further draft presented at the committee in spring 2024. Do we all agree with those recommendations? Yep. Thank you very much for coming along today. So we've got agenda item number 10 now, which is an update report from the Strategic Director of Children's Services. Meredith, over to you.
Okay, so I'm hoping you are finding these useful to give you some updates and some key information. I'm really going to focus just on the leadership and partnership paragraphs, and just to update you there. There's a wealth of information in the rest of the report that colleagues have provided that hopefully gives you that overview and assurance of our different areas. And happy to take questions on those as well. So we've been doing a lot of work around, our work around children and young people with special educational needs and disabilities. You hopefully know that Empower, who we are working with closely, are going to be here at the end of committee and informal session to give you some information around what we are finding and how we are looking to improve our work. We've also, I've also led with Anthony Gore, who's from the Primary Care Network, a piece of work going to Sheffield Health and Care Partnership, looking at priorities that we want to work on within the Integrated Care Board. I don't think any of these will be a surprise to you. It is about that best start, about starting well and how we make sure we have the right support, health visiting, midwifery, speech, language, therapy, et cetera, to ensure that our children and young people are getting the very best start in life and also able to learn and develop once they reach school age. We're also very much focusing on neurodiversity and social, emotional and mental health issues. We've had the conversations that the increase in education, health and care plans, the increase of children with education, health and care plans in our mainstream schools is predominantly children with neurodiversity. We know that there is a four-year waiting list to be assessed as having autism, two-year waiting list to be assessed to have ADHD. All of those things means that there are real issues in our system. So again, focusing on how we're supporting our mainstream settings to ensure that they have the right support, therapeutic support, so that children with neurodiversity and social, emotional, mental health can flourish within mainstream settings. And then finally, priority that we've put with the ICB is how our very complex children, our children who have, who are some of our high-cost placements, who have a range of different vulnerabilities, that we are working together to make sure that we have children's homes that have the right therapeutic input. And part of this report is saying that we went to Bournemouth National Children's and Adults Social Care Conference. And one of the really inspiring events was Somerset, who had worked with CAMHS to establish children's home with the right therapy. So again, putting that as a clear suggestion about how we share risk and resource with the ICB. We've talked about the belonging framework and a great deal of the work that's already happening and the conversations we're having across the system around race equality. And this was raised earlier, and we have been doing significant work behind the scenes. The inaugural meeting with leaders has taken place. We're looking at having six weekly meetings. We are getting a date to have the reverse scrutiny from the young people who attended. That's probably going to be in February. And Bob, who I think at the last meeting, has already talked about quite a lot of the conversations he's having with children and young people in schools around race equality as well. So we are motoring in that area. More to do, but we have traction and we are moving. I also, and this is unfortunately, it wasn't attached, but you have it in front of you in paper copy, is the response from Edwina Grant, who councillor Dale and I asked to come in at the beginning of, when I first arrived, to make sure that we were meeting our statutory duties as Director of Children's Services and Lead Member of Children's Services. And that report is there. And what it says fundamentally is that we work well as a council, that we need to make sure we continue to have line of sight. There are some recommendations. But actually, we need to celebrate the fact that actually some parts of our children's services does face community as well as moving up to early help, and it's how we have the right conversations. And we had a very good extended Children's Services Leadership Team meeting last week, where a number of people from across the council were there, having the right conversations about the journey of the child as well. And we are looking at how, as we continue to review the committee system, how we make sure that we're in a space where some decisions that are needing to be made are made jointly. And that's a piece of work that I'm doing with my colleagues in Democratic Services. So the rest is set out there. The only other thing I'd quite like to say, councillor Dale, is we've got three of our graduates on the graduate trainee scheme at the back of the hall. And I've had some fantastic conversations with them. Two in particular are working within our special educational needs and disabilities area. So it's really exciting to have another group of young people who are there challenging us within the workplace.
Thank you very much, Meredith. Has anyone got any questions or comments on this report? No? Thank you very much, Meredith. Very succinct. So now we've gone on to agenda item number 11, which is on page 91, and it's an update on our ALAX inspection and report. And it's Sally Williams who's bringing that.
Thank you. So the ALAX inspection report is attached, and I hope everybody's had a chance to read the report. And it is absolutely fantastic reading. So just to start off, I want to say a big thank you to all our services, all children's services, that work so hard for these outcomes for children and young people. We have attached our Osted action plan for reference and for if people have any questions. But I'll just run through it briefly, and then if there's any questions about that. We've done our action plan covering the findings of the Osted inspection, but also incorporating our aspirations. So even though we did achieve outstanding for our looks after children, we still want to continue to improve as we do for the rest of the service. But to give you a little update on the specific areas for improvement that we did talk to with Osted throughout the inspection. Initially, it is around the information that's shared with children's social care. Specifically, our partners, including the police, who do not pre-triage information when it's sent to children's social care. That means that there's issues about the quality of the information which is provided, and on occasions duplication of that information, that we could receive it two or three times. And that's not only a cost to the local authority in processing that information and ensuring that it's progressed appropriately, but it is about being able to make the right decisions at the right time for our children and young people, so the pressure that puts on the system. I would like to note that this is not just a Sheffield issue, and we're working with Osted's and with our partners and with South Yorkshire Police about being able to work more effectively together. Another big area about our use of language, and that's something I'd like to open out to yourselves as members, is how we record our information, how we present reports, language that we're using. And that's about getting rid of the professional language and just saying what we mean. And it's going back to our children and young people about what's the right language that's understandable and simple. Because I'm sure you can see from some reports that come here, they are rather long. And with the help of our young people, we've been able to shorten some of our documents, so they're very clear and say what we're going to do. Onto the next big point is around making sure our child in need plans and child protection plans are dynamically reviewed. And the main thing about that is about what we do with our recording system. And you'll see that there's a few things through this action plan about how, once we can make some changes in our recording system, it will be able to evidence all the work that we are already doing. We've got a point about our public law, and that's when we work with children and families to avoid going into court proceedings if possible. And that is a piece of work about just carrying on improving to be outstanding. We are working with the South Yorkshire authorities, and it was noted throughout the inspection about the improved outcomes when we do attend court, about time scales being much quicker, but about making the right decisions and robustly assessing and intervening to avoid court. And that's highlighted in our placement information, our looks after children information that I presented previously, which shows... that I presented previously, which shows that where children can stay at home or with family and connected carers, they do so. And the inspection noted our sufficiency and about the improvement work that we're doing in our in-house residential homes, but also when we need to use outer city placements, which are often the more expensive placements and children with complex needs. And one of the things that Ofsted noted is when children are living in these circumstances, we have a really robust oversight arrangements between children's social care and our commissioning colleagues to make sure that children are seen regularly in the home and able to speak. And the final piece of work really is around our care leavers. And that's about making sure we're really clear in our offer. Some of that goes back to the language that we're using and our voice and influence team are supporting us in that to make sure that we're clear about what our care leavers are entitled to and how to get support. And that links into the work as well with our unaccompanied asylum seeking children, which has led to the development of our Young Refugee Team, just to make sure that we're getting that right support at the right time. I think that's a whistle stopped heart of the action plan, but if anybody's got any questions?
Any questions or comments from members, I've got a challenge. I've got a challenge and I think Sally's raised this about the language. And I'm wondering whether the challenge could be that this committee writes its reports, bearing in mind we are the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee, where we would really like to see children and young people coming and engaging with us and reading the papers, if we can write our papers, if I could understand them, write them for me to be able to understand them, then our children and young people would be able to understand them. But is this something that this committee can work towards? I know it would be a changing way of working for some officers to be able to write our reports in a way that we can encourage young people to come and engage with us. So that is the challenge for this committee to change the way that we present our reports. Thank you. Councillor Haby.
I just want to say I accept the challenge.
Councillor Gorka.
Hopefully we'll set the standard for all the policy committees.
Good idea, that's fine. Bearing in mind we are doing a Belonging Framework and every decision we make should have children at the heart of it. So if we can, if we can set the bar, then that would be a really good idea. We would like to take that challenge upon from our officers.
So just to add to your challenge, we've got a member, sorry, we've got a language day coming up. So it'll be in two half sessions, so about three hours if people want to commit to it. We can send the days. What we're going to be looking at is different ways that we use language, how we say what we mean about what terminology is okay, what's not okay. And we all know that historically, language has been used as not okay. And when we see that language, what we can do to address it and what we can do to say that we're not accepting language like that moving forward. So I'm more than happy for an invite to come out to the committee if people would like to be part of that day.
That'd be great, thank you very much Sally. And I'm sure, not everyone has to, but anybody who's interested, please sign up. Meredith.
And I will accept the challenge and I will make sure that our reports are read simple. Yeah, it's simple. I do need to just encourage democratic services to let us do that as well, but we will.
That's great, we'll send it an email to democratic services and support you in that. Thank you very much. Any more questions or comments on this paper? No, so the recommendation is to note the progress made since 2019 inspection through both the inspection report appendix one and the action plan appendix two. And to highlight the importance of the council-wide response to providing good and outstanding services for children and families within Sheffield. And I would just like to thank everyone who works with our children and young people to making them get in this good report. But it's not about the report, it's actually about the quality and the outcomes for children and young people. So thank you all again very much for that. So now we move on to agenda item number 12, which is the Education, Children and Families Budget Report, options for 2024, 25. Mark, you're going to take us through this report. But as mentioned before, if members wish to discuss the information in the appendices, we will need to ask members of the public and press to kindly leave for this part of the meeting. And we will halt the webcast before, because it will contain exempt information. Do any members feel right now that they've got any questions relevant to those appendices? Or shall we go on and then if you have, we'll close the meeting at that point? Okay, Mark, over to you.
Thank you councillor Dale. I think paper 12 is just a short update on the work we did and the information that was shared at the November committee. At the November committee, we went through quite an extensive information sharing in terms of the context and some of the trajectory, some of the projections and the budget pressure. And what I want to do is draw the attention of the committee to table 3.1, which captures the current position. Overall, the committee has got 14.1 million pounds worth of pressures. We have been given 8.3 million pounds of new income and we have found 5.9 million pounds worth of mitigation. Now, when the committee looked, received the paper in November, at that stage, we had a gap of 3.7 million pounds. Between November and now, we have managed to identify three additional saving proposals, mitigation proposal, which is helping us produce a balanced position. I think the next step was to just go through those proposals, however, I don't want to do that in an open meeting.
So at this point, if I could ask members of the public to leave the chamber and if we can end the webcast, pause it for now, is that okay? Thank you. Thank you, are we back now? Thank you for everyone's patience who is watching today. We've now opened up the meeting against the webcast. So on the back of the discussion that we've had, the recommendations for this paper are for this committee to note the financial pressures for 2024-25, detailed within this report and the new income available to mitigate them. Notes the measures proposed in the report to mitigate these pressures and that they will be presented to the S and R Policy Committee as part of the council's budget for 2425. Notes that officers will work to develop any necessary detailed implementation plans for the proposals in this report so that the proposals, once agreed, can be implemented as planned before or during the 2425 financial year. And notes that this is a propose, notes that it is proposed that there will be a further update at the December, oh, the December committee is today. So we'll set that recommendation off, that must be a leftover from last time. I've got a recommendation update at the December committee meeting, that's today. We are now updating and we will take that off there. Thank you. So are we all agreed? Thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda is agenda item number 13, which is on page 167 of your pack. And the officer presenting is Jane Wilby, thank you. Over to you Jane.
Thank you Chair, I'll try to keep it brief, I know we've got to try and get out before. I'm Jane Wilby, Head of Accounting. The paper gives an update on the quarter two budget monitoring position for 2324. The last update was in September on the quarter one outturn position. At quarter two, the council's forecasting an overspend in the general fund of 17.4 million against a net revenue budget of 487 million, which is a variance of 3.6%. The quarter one position forecasted an overspend of 17.6 million, so not a big movement between quarters. But we did acknowledge the movement of 2 million in the Education, Children and Families Committee due to the recognition of the income forecast from health would not be achieved within the financial year. This 2 million was largely offset through our capital financing budget. Economic conditions continue to yield strong interest rates on our investments and the slippage in the capital programme delayed the need for borrowing and has strengthened our overall cash position and interest returns have been above budget again this quarter. The three main areas for overspend for the council are adult social care, homelessness and children's social care. In adults, we've seen a big investment bringing down average costs following the spike we saw in the pandemic. But the service continues to be challenged by increasing demand and inflating cost base. The homelessness situation arisen post lockdown, coupled with the shortage of affordable housing in the city and limited range of options, our use of hotel and bed and breakfast accommodation has reached an unsustainable and unaffordable level. The increase in homelessness is a national issue and there's now more than 100,000 households in temporary accommodation, which is the highest for 20 years. In the Education, Children and Families Committee, it's 10.9 million overspent. 5.5 million of that in children and families budgets, 3.3 in education and skills and 2.1 in integrated commissioning. With huge challenges from the rising cost of placements, as we've discussed today, caused by the limited supply in the city, the number of looked after children has not changed significantly. In table 5.9 in the paper, it shows the cost increase between this year in placement costs, highlighting the external residential being the main cause of overspend. The average cost of placements has increased by approximately 800 pounds from the previous year. There is a risk that total costs could increase again if the number of children that we support continues to grow. We also have a shortage of foster carers to support demand. Recent studies showed that almost twice as many households quit mainstream fostering than did join. The budget saving of 1.6 million to increase the number of foster carers is therefore forecast to be undelivered. We also have a rising cost of home to school transport, which we've talked about today. And we're now supporting over 2,360 children, which is an increase of almost 1,000 children in four years, including a further 89 from this school year. The whole scale review will be discussed later today. And it's to understand the drivers for the rising demand and develop solutions to bring down those costs. The table 1.7.3 details the savings plans for the committee. Only 2.9 million will be delivered this year, the majority are undeliverable for the committee. The council wide, however, of the 47 million pounds worth of budget savings, 80% are on track to deliver with a further 12% that will be delivered in 2425. So the issues in Sheffield are not unique. Councils across the country are experiencing the same challenges and financial context. We've seen four local authorities in the past 12 months declaring solvency, issuing 114 notices, Nottingham being the most recent name. Leeds reported a quarter two overspend of 30 million, 28 relating to children's services. There is a similar story for children's services overspends in other core cities, including Liverpool, Bristol, Newcastle and Manchester. Sheffield City Council has been able to manage overspends by drawing from reserves for the past two financial years and will do so again this year if no further in-year mitigations are brought forward. We did set aside 70 million of our reserves in 21 for budget contingency and will have 13 million remaining at the end of the year. But these reserves can only be used once and are depleting as our overspends continue. The Autumn Statement offered no reassurance from government there'll be any additional funding for local authorities. The medium term financial analysis that was presented in September highlighted a 61 million budget gap over the next four years with 18 falling next year. We've been developing solutions across the council and recent policy committee meetings have seen these proposals and they will be agreed in December meetings. The local government financial settlement was announced yesterday and the finance team is busy assessing the impact of this. On the 21st of December, Strategy and Resources will be asked to make the recommendations on those savings to date for council. And on February 21st, 24, Strategy and Resources will be asked to recommend the full budget to council. The council must continue to drive the delivery of budgets and saving plans and tackle those in-year overspends to prevent that budget gap from widening. The committee is asked to note the council's financial position for quarter two. The quarter three position will be presented to committees in March. Thank you.
Thank you Jane, any questions or comments on, I think we all feel a bit deflated, don't we really? When it comes to this bit, it is very difficult. And I do thank all officers for trying to get us through this terrible landscape when it comes to budgets and particularly in our area. It is very, very difficult, really disappointing from the Autumn Statement for us. And also, we will wait with bait of breath to find out whether anybody's found any cash to be able to support children in Sheffield from the government this week. Looking forward to that, I want on my breath. But yeah, thank you. Any more questions or comments on this for Jane? No? Well, that's the recommendation on this one is to note the updated information and management actions on the 2324 revenue budget outturn as described in this report. Are we all agreed? Thank you very much, as the bell chimes at four o'clock, we've kind of worked that quite well. So that concludes this meeting for today. And the next meeting of the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee will be on the 8th of February 2024 at 2pm. And thank you very much everyone for attending and thank you everyone for watching. We'll see you all again in February, thank you.